Gentlemen, ready? Madam Vice Mayor, ready? Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the July 1st, 2024 meeting of the Smithfield Town Council to order. If you'd please rise with me and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Welcome this afternoon. Happy Independence Day before we get there. The first item on the agenda is the informational section. Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, sir. Included in your packet is the monthly activity report as well as the committee summary reports. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Stallings by members of council? Being none, the next item on the agenda is presentation briefing by Renee Roundtree, Allen White Board of Supervisors, District One. Supervisor Roundtree, good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. I just have a few points this evening, and hopefully you can hear me. They're in the areas of transportation, budget, and economic development. Transportation, we've received bids for the Nike Park Extended Project, and those have come in within budget. So we expect VDOT to award the contract within the next 30 days. That's for Nike Park Extended. The design of the Route 10-258 intersection at Smithfield is 60%, six-zero percent complete and progressing well. And I think we reported that in our intergovernmental meeting that we did have last week. The design of the Route 258-460 intersection at Dairy Queen is 60%, six-zero percent complete and also progressing well. We'll be advertising for bids for the extension of William Gualtney Way and the Shirley T. Holland Intermodal Park this week. And we'd like to report that the Cypress Creek Project, just from our perspective, is progressing on time and on budget. As far as budget, we adopted the budget in May. Highlights include a 9% increase for Allen White County Schools' operating budget plus $9.5 million for school capital projects. We did approve a two-cent tax increase and four new positions for the Sheriff's Department, and that's largely to cover a request of the judges to have extra deputies in the courtroom. Under community development, economic development, we have a 352,000-square-foot warehouse under construction in the Shirley T. Holland Intermodal Park. We do have a new warehouse planned for property in Shirley T. Holland down Route 258. You probably read in the media that we denied the special use permit for the proposed logistics center there in Windsor, but we do have other activity. The Royal Farms in Carrollton is nearing completion. You probably see that as well. Public supermarket in Carrollton is under construction. The Dollar Tree site plan in front of the Nest Apartments has been approved. We need one more of those, right? The Riverside Hospital construction is progressing, and the county received a grant in the amount of $1.25 million for a new water tank behind Riverside. So that will increase the water pressure for the Benz Grant neighborhood. Do you all have any questions?
Any questions for Supervisor Roundtree?
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Have a good evening. Next is public comments. I have four signed up, five minutes per speaker. The first one is Mr. Bill Harris.
Good evening, sir.
And good evening to you all. Wish I'd planned seven minutes. Bill's not here to stop me.
But Michael is.
You got it. Good evening. My name is Bill Harris. I live at 329 Grace Street in downtown Smithfield. As you know, there's a lot of interest and more than a little concern regarding how the town should proceed in response to the $6 million offer that Mr. Luter has made to the town. As long as the town agrees to match that gift dollar-for-dollar and to spend the first part of that money on specific projects Mr. Luter has identified as first priorities. $6 million is a lot of money, and there's no question a lot of good can be accomplished here in town with that kind of money. On its face, accepting this type of offer seems a no-brainer, but I suggest Town Council needs to take a very long look at every possible impact that accepting this gift might have on the town and its citizens before any final decision is made. Our primary concern is the question of how the town would get that $6 million to match dollar-for-dollar. I understand the argument that if we were to agree to the dollar-to-dollar match, the town would have some $12 million at its disposal to accomplish necessary projects around the town and would benefit from the overall expense to the town would be less than if the town were to complete these types of projects without that $6 million cushion. The idea is a simple one. If we were to engage in this match, a project in the future that would have cost us 2X of our own money would now only cost us 1X because we would be taking 1X from the Luter pot. At last month's Town Council meeting, Mayor Bowman referred to this as the town paying 50 cents on the dollar to get certain projects accomplished. However, for 50 cents on the dollar to be the reality, we would have to have the $6 million matching money on hand, and the only way for us to do that today would be to draw down $6 million from the town's reserves. I'm not sure that drawing down on our reserves, cutting into our safety net for the future is really the way we would want to go to make that $6 million match. The only other way the town council could provide $6 million-to-dollar match would be to take out a loan on behalf of the citizens of Smithfield, and while this would provide the necessary capital, it would end the concept of 50% on the dollar. The interest on a note of this size would significantly raise the real cost of any match and raise the town's cost as a share of costs on any projects in the future. So the question here is, would it make sense for us to go into debt in order to fund $6 million-to-dollar match? It seems prudent that before any final decisions are made as to whether or not the town accepts or rejects Mr. Luter's proposal, Town Council would complete due diligence and invest the time and analysis the immediate and long-range impact that both ways of securing the funds dollar-to-dollar match would have on our financial stability as a town, on our citizens' pocketbooks, and on our ability to complete down-the-road capital-outlay projects. After completing such a comprehensive study, it would be right and good and helpful if Town Council would provide an in-depth presentation to the public as to their findings, specifically addressing the pros and cons of each possibility, and then and only then proceed to a discussion as to whether or not the Town Council should accept or reject Mr. Luter's proposal. The final discussion necessarily must include consideration of things other than just how to fund a dollar-to-dollar match. It is imperative the Town Council make it very clear to the public if council is considering committing any of the $6 million in $6 million match to support any parts of the development project known as Ten Grange. There continues to be too much uncertainty as to whether or not Town Council intends to commit public monies in support of any aspect of the Ten Grange private project development. I remain 100% opposed to using any town money to support any private profit-making endeavor and was glad to hear a number of you sitting around the Town Council table tonight reaffirm your opposition to public-private partnership over the last couple of months. It would also be helpful for public understanding if Town Council could explain what they believe Mr. Luter means when he says he hopes that money left over from the priority projects will be used to further other Luter family concerns. It seems really important that before we proceed to consider accepting this offer, we know exactly how much of the $12 million will be allocated right from the beginning to take care of the priority projects and any other projects Mr. Luter has in mind. It is a responsibility of town leadership to get down in the weeds and make sure that they understand every possible impact, every possible cost, and to share that complete understanding with the citizens of the town before taking up the question of yes or no on Mr. Luter's proposal. Appreciate you all listening. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Next is Mary Harris.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Before you start, the timer, I just want to say that I don't always agree with Bill, but you're going to hear a lot of overlap this time, that we do have some agreement. So anyway, I'm Mary Harris. I live at 329 Grace Street in Smithfield, Virginia. I am here tonight to speak again on the proposal to use up to $6 million of taxpayer funds to match Joe Luter's proposed gift. I spoke about that last meeting. We all know that $6 million is a lot of money, at least to most people in the room tonight and people that will be watching this. Tax money should be used to better the lives of all citizens that have paid these taxes. There are many things that could be done with $6 million to benefit Smithfield. With that being said, before any decision is made to accept this gift, it is important to understand exactly what we are obligated to and how much will be left for the town to use at its own discretion. We can all agree that this town needs many things. Some examples are expansion of services and increased pay for our staff, especially our public safety staff like police and fire, since public safety is the number-one obligation of any government body. A town building where most of our staff could be located so that citizens can go to one place to obtain services. Traffic control and mitigation plans and mechanisms. Updating of infrastructure all through town. Beautification all through town. Green space and tree planting all through town. Sidewalks all through town, and much more. As I understand it, we have as much time as needed to decide on this gift. I encourage all of you to take the position of fully understanding this financial obligation. There's a lot of rhetoric in both word and visual displays such as standing in support of various projects. We need to remember that there are 9,000 citizens in Smithfield. Anyone saying they represent the majority cannot truly say that unless they have done a full and legitimate survey or have used a referendum on a ballot. We need facts and costs associated with this obligation before this gift is accepted, which would include clearly outlining to the taxpayers exactly what the money will be used for. Also, how much it will cost taxpayers and in what timeframe, and how much the taxpayer match would be made, how would it be made, debt or existing funds? No matter what is decided, I am concerned about the possibility of using a large portion of our reserve and unrestricted funds for one or two projects. In addition, I am opposed to using any debt instrument to make a gift match. Answering questions and fully disclosing costs and obligations is at least what we deserve from you as the ones that paid the taxes you are considering obligating. I appreciate you listening tonight, and I hope you will take into consideration what I and others have said about this and will continue to say about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Next is Mary Ellen Biebermeyer. Ms. Biebermeyer?
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Mary Ellen Biebermeyer, 355 Grace Street. I'm here to speak about the recent donation also from Mr. Joe Luter III to the town of Smithfield. First of all, I'm sorry to hear that apparently Mr. Luter has had some health issues, so we certainly wish him well, and I'd also like to thank him for his generous donation of $6 million. That's certainly a lot of money to a small town like Smithfield, and I'm sure we could put it to good use. My concern with this donation, though, is the supposed requirement that we, the town of Smithfield, will need to come up with a matching $6 million or whatever sum we come up with in order to keep this money. How can we, and I mean the collective "we," Town Council, staff, and residents, how can we use taxpayer money when we have parents trying to provide for their families who are living paycheck to paycheck? We have moms trying to put food on the table for their kids, and we have seniors who live on a fixed income. How can we ask them to pay more taxes to fund this? That is not right. Taxpayer money should not be used to match this donation. I have heard some say that when a donation like this is received, the recipient should have some skin in the game, and that's why we should be required to match these funds. In general, I might agree with that sentiment, but our skin in the game is that we have to maintain all these facilities. We already spend a good amount of money maintaining the facilities that we have. Truth be told, we don't have $6 million, and we can't afford $6 million. Might I remind you that the Town Council not too long ago just authorized spending over $900,000 on a concession stand, concession stand at the Luter Sports Facility? I think we can all agree that was a hard pill to swallow. $900,000 was a lot of money, and now we're supposed to come up with $6 million. I don't think so. If there are some that are in favor of accepting this donation and the challenge of matching it, might I suggest crowdfunding as a way of matching. That way, is it a voluntary donation to the town instead of using hard-earned taxpayer funds? Some might give $25 or $50. I might even consider donating, but others who feel strongly about this project may want to give $1,000, $10,000, or maybe even $1 million. We can only dream. But it is their choice. That's their skin in the game. Let them put their money where their mouth is. Do not use taxpayer funds. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Darren Cutler? Good afternoon, Mr. Cutler.
Good afternoon. I'm Darren Cutler from 102 Commerce Street, Smithfield. I'm part of a pretty casual, I just returned from Maine and Newport, Rhode Island and Connecticut where I was doing some mammography/physics work there. One of my favorite things up there, at one point I was, I was unfortunate enough to live in Rock, Connecticut, but in Newport, there's a thing called the cliff walk, and this is where the homes of J.P. Morgan, the Rockefellers, were all built along the cliff. These homes were then donated to the community or donated to caregiving organizations. There was no match of purchasing prices. Their wealth was given away as donations not requiring a matching gift. Now, there may have been requirements on some of those. As a matter of fact, sometimes they gave money to the Metropolitan Museum of Art, and it had to go to the Metropolitan Museum of Art, but it didn't require the citizens of New York City to match, not 50 cents on the dollar, just to, you know, piggyback on Mr. Harris's comment, that's dollar on the dollar. $6 million for $6 million is dollar on the dollar. If it were $8 million versus $4 million, that would have been 50 cents on the dollar or, you know, something like that. But so, you know, I think we need to look at this not quite as a gift, but a use of a donation, if you will, to provide impetus to the council to also shell out money in place of perhaps a public-private partnership or in some way to get taxpayer dollars involved in the desires of a former resident of the town. I also wanted to speak on briefly, you know, I was, I was a bit surprised last week, or last month in the meeting, at the conclusion of the citizens' comments, there were several speakers that spoke and assailed some of the citizens that spoke, and there was no concern expressed, very little concern expressed, for the matter at hand that the citizens were here to speak about, but concern, very, very much spoken about concern for a leak, when in reality, a leak implies a secret, and this is in fact public information and is required to be disclosed to the public. I think once an email and letter was sent, that is now public information, therefore it cannot be leaked unless it was intended to be a secret. So why would we partner on an entrance corridor? At the end of the vote on the Grange, there was, again, another lecture given to the citizens that spoke out about it, and part of that lecture was, we trust the Luters to do a great job on this. We would rather them develop it than anyone else. Do we not believe that the Luters are going to make enhanced entrance to sell the homes in this development? Why should the town devote money to that? We've already committed to the sidewalk. That's already happening. The wall, I had a long conversation with Mr. Gualtney at the conclusion of last month's meeting, said the wall was probably, he estimated to be about $500,000, very well within the realm of the wealth and expected profit of such a development and the wealth of the developer. So I'm not sure why the town would need to be involved in that. Do we not have faith that this is going to be a beautiful development by the Luters? I think that that's already been stated. Have we given away, if we accept this money, change the gears a little bit, are we giving away some authority? So $12 million, we have some requirements and some requests in that letter to the Luter family. Are we giving away some authority to a developer on what happens with that money? It appears that we are. We put it in, we put it in a pot, and then who makes the decisions on it? We're already allowing them in that letter to make some decisions about where taxpayer dollars are going. Last, I'd like to close with, when is there going to be a cost-benefit analysis of this? There certainly has to be some type of in-depth, formal business case analysis to ensure that the money, if it is indeed going to be voted on and accepted, is going to be put forth in the proper manner and get, I would say, some contractual buy-in from the developer on the limits of their influence. I think it's beyond time to determine the pros and cons and inform the citizens exactly how the dollars will be spent, and it seems like there's some work to do with that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to be heard? That's all I have on the sign-up sheet.
Yeah. Different subject.
You state your name for the record, please, sir.
Bob Heinz, 216 Washington. I was looking around at the stoplights around town, and I know this is a VDOT thing, not a town thing, because we don't have.
Mr. Heinz, can you get closer to the microphone? I can't hear you, sir. Maybe it's me or whatever.
I'll try it again.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I used to get in trouble in school because my voice carried, but I guess old and it doesn't work anymore. Stoplights, I noticed that if you're coming from the elementary school towards town, there's a right-turn arrow. So while the people are turning left off of 10 heading towards Windsor, the traffic can just flow. Maybe that's for the middle school traffic. I don't know. I mean, the elementary school traffic. But I don't see the same thing up at the high school. I don't see it at other intersections. I don't see a right-turn arrow coming on the Main Street from Route 10 while the other people have a leading green. I think it would help traffic flow some if people didn't have to pull up to the stop sign, look and make sure people are not coming yet, because you've probably had the same experience. You stop, and you get ready to go, and no sooner than you start, here comes the traffic at you. So you've sort of pulled out in front of somebody, but not intentionally. If you've got the green arrow while the other people have the leading green, it'll turn yellow, and then, you know, it's time to stop, and then you just, you deal with it after that. But I think that would help the traffic flow in some places, and I know VDOT's going to be redesigning some intersections, but I'd like to see a little more of this now with some other intersections, just to let the traffic go ahead and flow instead of backing up. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heinz. Next item I have on the agenda is council comments. Any member of council wish to be heard this evening?
I do have, I'd like to say something.
Madam Vice Mayor?
I'd like to thank Mayor Bowman, the town of Smithfield, and especially Judy Winslow for supporting the Juneteenth festivities on June 19th. There were approximately 200 people in attendance, so it kind of brought traffic, extra traffic back downtown to the historic district that we would normally not have had. Festivities took place at the Schoolhouse Museum, down at the, what do we call it?
Main Street Stage.
Main Street Station, and then there were also food trucks in the Bank of Southside parking lot. I was elated with the participation. It was a diverse participation. It was well-attended. There were other partners and agencies that actually put this event on. It was an inaugural event, and we're excited about having the same thing on next year, and if you didn't attend, I would highly encourage you to attend it next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Item C1, Councilman Randy Pack.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, the first thing we have tonight is a motion to approve the addition of a wellness reimbursement policy to the personnel manual. This is a, just what it says, our town employees will be eligible for certain wellness reimbursement that is beneficial to their health. We do recommend this for approval this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Item C2, Vice Mayor Butler.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the extension of Clay Street and the town's maintenance systems for funding. For those that live in Riverview or if you've been to the library in that direction, that should have been an extension that should have always come out to James Street, and we have the opportunity now to put that into the VDOT system.
Thank you, ma'am. Item C3, Madam Vice Mayor?
Motion to adopt the Town Council's vision document. Back in February 2023, we came up, we met at a retreat over at the Manor House and came up with some strategy that we'd like to accomplish. And at our committee meeting on last week, the Town Manager presented it to us where we were in certain strategies that we set forth. Some we're currently in the process of working, some we have accomplished, so this afternoon we'd like to adopt that Town Council's vision document.
Thank you, ma'am. Item C4, Councilman Randy Pack.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, we have just one invoice today and the success of $20,000, which requires council authorization, and that is to Blair Brothers for $435,400.
Thank you. Any questions by members of council on the consent agenda items?
Mr. Mayor, the 435.
Councilman Smith.
The 435, Randy, does that include the 106?
No, sir, it does not. That's a separate action item.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions on the consent agenda items? If not, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Pack, seconded by Councilman Gibbs. Further discussion on the consent agenda items. Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll, please.
Councilman Collins?
Yes.
Councilman Gibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Pack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Uh.
Mayor Bowman?
Yes. Next, we have the Action Section. I understand Councilman Pack, item one is being deferred.
Yes, sir. The invoice to Blair Brothers for $106,034 had the contingency fees. We've not got the answer to that, so we're going to table that until next month.
We'll defer and table that one until the August council meeting.
Whatever the proper term is.
Yes, sir. That's fine. Item two on the Action Section, Mr. Collins and Mr. Gibbs, who's going to handle that?
Yes, I will. Yes, I like, I will.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to extend Mr. Gene Moreau's service to serve another term on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Motion made by Councilman Collins, seconded by Councilman Gibbs. Further discussion or questions of the two gentlemen? If not, the chair will call the roll, please.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Pack?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Uh.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Gibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Bowman?
Yes. Item three, the town attorney is on vacation. He called me this morning and advised me that he thought everything was fine as far as this matter was concerned, but I'm not going to speak. I would ask if you all have had time to review the minutes of the meeting and if there are any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes as presented. If not, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Tuesday, June 4th, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
That was, Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Sir seconded, seconded by Councilman Pack. Further discussion? Call the questions, please.
Councilman Gibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Collins?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Pack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Mayor Bowman?
Yes. Next item is new business, disposition of real property. Town Manager Michael Stallings.
Yes, sir. Before you this evening, council has discussed the possibility of disposition of the property we own at 228 Main Street, known as the Smithfield Times Building. This would be a vote to accept sealed bids for the property. We would have those due on July 31st, and then we would, council would hold a public hearing and make a decision on what to do beyond that based off those bids. As you may recall, we had bought this building thinking it might be a possible expansion of Town Hall to move some offices, and as we went through that evaluation process, it just didn't, but it wasn't feasible to use it for that use. So this will authorize us to put this ad out to receive sealed bids, again, due on the 31st. Once we open those bids, council would then have to have a public hearing to officially dispose of the property.
And that bid process would have the right to refuse any and all bids, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Stallings by members of council? The chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we open up Mr. Mayor, I move that we open up the sealed bid process for the building known as the Smithfield Times Building as presented by town manager Michael Stallings.
Motion made by Councilman Pack, is her second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Collins. Further discussion?
Uh, one question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Smith.
Do we have an appraisal for this yet?
Yes, sir, we did receive an appraisal for the property.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Further questions? Call the roll, please, ma'am.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Gibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Pack?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Bowman?
Yes. Next item is old business. Any old business to come before council? Next item is adjournment. Anyone else have anything before we? Before, before we adjourn, I'd like to take this opportunity to wish everyone a happy and safe Independence Day. Please keep in mind, while the hamburgers and hot dogs are good, we remember those veterans that sacrificed so much so that we could be here today, some of which are sitting up here on the dais with me today, so I really, really want to thank all those veterans that, that served so willingly, and for those that we can't thank, to keep those in our thoughts and prayers. No further business coming forward? Yes, sir, Mr. Gibbs.
Want us to remember to keep Leslie King in our prayers as, you know, our Father transition.
I'm sorry?
Leslie.
Yes.
Yeah, our Father, keep...
Yes. The reason Leslie's not here tonight is Leslie's father passed away last week. The service was held yesterday, and we want to keep Leslie in our thoughts and prayers, so thank you very much for that, sir. Any further comments? If not, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.